Ask that we have a moment of silence to reflect on the events of this past week. We've opened the signal and now we have a long period of waiting and beginning of the next phase, which will unfold in months to come. Let's keep the families directly impacted by the tragic murders in our hearts. And let's hope for strength, patience, healing, and healing for our community. It is six p.m. Our callers are excited to meet with President President Trump. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Senator President Trump, Senator President Trump, Senator President Trump, Senator President Trump. Our Republican caucus will need Governor Clinton to appoint the replacement to serve during Governor Clinton's term and give the assignment for the first twenty twenty-three. So tonight we do have four council members, Brooke, Andrew, Aldrich, Jorge, Paul, Dole.
Danny Flora.
Here.
Mike Isley.
Here.
Spencer Kingery.
Here.
Cody Nelson.
Here.
Next, the minutes from the October third twenty twenty-three meeting. Are there any additions, corrections, additions, or amendments?
Motion to pass last minute.
For a second?
For a second.
Without objection, the minutes are ready. Due to the whole agenda that we have tonight, we will dispense with the reports. The department reports were included into the docket and will be without objection attached as part of the record of this meeting. The topic contains proposed twenty twenty-three holiday schedule. Is there a motion to approve it?
Motion to adjourn.
For a second? Are there any discussions? All those in favor of adopting the holiday schedule for twenty twenty-three signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Motion carries. Proposed ordinance twenty twenty-two dash fifteen, regulating UTVs and golf carts on the city streets of Delphi is presented for third and final reading. Is there a motion to pass ordinance twenty twenty-two dash fifteen?
Motion to pass. Motion to pass ordinance twenty twenty-two dash fifteen.
On third and final reading?
On third and final reading.
The discussion?
So, Leanne had a question about proof of insurance. I think if there's no objections, we could take a copy of the insurance on registration. I don't know that that needs to fill out the ordinance.
It does.
Almost administrative. I would just add that.
Ready for the vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Motion carries. Yes, go ahead. You can go over here. Been at this for a while. Chief of game, so, and Leanne, Aldrich, show where you go from here. Application draft that was being reviewed and when the changes have been submitted, we're happy with that. What we'll release that on Facebook, on the webpage, have copies available at the city building. I probably get another couple of days. Is begin to make appointments, correct, with the police department?
Do you want to make it the police department or do you want to just call in that? We can use the call in.
I would have to call in to you guys and all, and that way they can get us information. We can contact them and schedule a time. As far as if someone lives out of the city and wants to drive it into town, say they live two miles out, they're going to have to trailer it in because we can't go out and do that. So they're going to have to make arrangements to trailer it in and so we can inspect it that way. The only other little curve ball there is that.
Are you going to have Leanne take the money care of the day? Just have her deal with all that?
Yeah, because we really don't want to deal with any of it as far as that. That's like they do with our accident, not accident, but our bid checks and things like that.
So just getting on the front end of this and then through the post office.
I think we've already got the tags made up and what we did is we did them by different colors for each year. Brooke and I had talked about it. Originally it said from September to September, and I don't want to change. I know it's late neither, but I don't want to change it to January because that's my end of the year and financial and everything. So I think I would like to see it left from September to September. That way next year when the weather's good, they can get back out on there and they don't put chains on their tires and snow up. But we've coordinated and we've taken it and fixed it so that each year it's a different color tag that'll be on their machines. So it'd be easy for the police to be writing nice red colored tags. So that should simplify that process too. So I think all the bases are covered. We'll get the application approved and we'll be ready to go on.
So Justin, by one minute for explaining the state debt.
I believe since you're establishing a new fee and also there are penalties you're going to publish first and after it's published, does that's per week here and if you will hear that?
So in reality?
We can't do it. Yeah, it's published.
So we have another one before permits can be issued?
Thirty days.
I think it's thirty days.
So. So. And obviously this has a sunset provision and I would hate for it to run in such a way that, you know, we haven't made that determination. You know, somebody renews for year two and then, you know, if we don't make the effort to approve it again, it goes away. So we don't want a situation where someone's paid the dollar and then the law and the ordinance dies. So we should probably make that period come December. If you remember.
Look at that head. Sure. Sure we did.
I didn't say anything.
You what?
I didn't say anything.
So we can wait for the provision line, issue permits, and then we need someone to get through the administrative approval report, please.
We could start processing applications.
Process applications.
Just have the fees terminated after, who knows? If the fees terminated, issue permits after the effect, I think you can start processing.
So we need to get something on paper back before?
Yeah.
So that's going to be, you know, like a picture result.
You could try. I mean, if it's written and it's sent over so that it's kind of copy and paste without a lot of keying in things, you might be able to get that done.
Let's try to get back to that before we can. This week, ten minutes, that would maybe be December. We'll have our meeting on December fifth, but that would be very big. Before we can accept these, is that perfect? Okay. So we'll get that ever done to begin as soon as we have the final draft of the application and that known to those who are interested and start making applications and doing inspections and getting ready to issue the actual permits as soon as there are the color keys. That's our plan.
We can, yeah, because we can do the inspections and having this and then when it comes live, basically, we can just hand those permits. We can issue those permits, we're calling and saying, come pick them up.
The application will have the full list of names that are required. Includes, of course, driver's license, make a model of the UTV of golf cart, the ID number for that vehicle, color, et cetera. Just some understandings that needs to be approved by the police department inspector and approve. Certified that you've read the ordinance and know where the vehicles can be operated. And we will create a map for, you know, the areas where you can operate them and those where you cannot. And get that published on this week's paper, but in future issue of the paper and also available on the website. You'll need to provide a copy of the insurance during the inspection process or add to pay your tour vermin fee. And that pretty much is it. Driver's licenses for anyone who operates the vehicle, all the names and stuff. So if any questions, we'll all get some of those.
You said copy of the insurance. Will just the proof card be sufficient?
Yes.
I think by ordinance, it says you have to have the policy, the insurance carrier name and policy number.
Right.
Those are some of those cards that has those.
Yes.
Yeah, it's going to show who it is and it's going to tell us the number of, that's what the ordinance.
Next on the agenda, is a overview of the rates for the wastewater department, the projects that are coming up and also water department. Some of the reasons. Dan Hen and Dean Brock are here from Baker Tilling to kind of take us through the rate study that they have done. So it's the Dan and Dean, Dan and Dean has, so gentlemen, that for all.
All right, thank you. I'm Dean. I'm going to, I handed out two copies. The thicker copy that you have is wastewater and we'll go through that first. Waste, wastewater is just a two pager that we'll hit second. I'm going to hit the highlights. We'll hit every scheduling here, but if there's something you're curious about, as I'm going through it, feel free to stop me, ask any questions along the way. I'll first turn your attention to page four. So just kind of set the stage a little bit. Last wastewater adjustment was in 2013. As you guys have heard from prior discussions, we're looking at a couple of projects, right? Clarifier project is kind of the initial one that needs to be accomplished and then a larger expansion project followed. So what you see on page four is kind of an outline of the estimated project cost and funding for the clarifier project at this point. Broken it down into city, county, and Indiana Packers. So you can see that the total project cost is just over six million or six million seventy thousand dollars. As we break that down, it is assumed that Indiana Packers would contribute three million seven hundred and sixty-two thousand towards that cost, the county eight hundred and thirty-five thousand, with the city borrowing or issuing debt of one million four hundred and seventy-two thousand. So that is the clarifier piece, the project. That would be the initial phase. So you'll see on here, we show revenue bonds. You may ask, say, well, gosh, I feel like you guys said maybe we'll finance that with bond anticipation notes. And that's true. We're still leaving the options open at this point. If it was advantageous to issue bonds, lock in long-term interest rates now, that's still something we would consider and is built into the rate analysis. But we do anticipate issuing bond anticipation notes for this portion of the project and then those would be taken out with the long-term financing as part of the expansion project that would come later. So the next page is the expansion portion of the project, which is much more significant. It's, you can see the total estimated project cost just above the estimated project funding there in total is fifty million seven hundred and seventy-three thousand. So just recall, these are all based on estimates at this point. We don't have bids in hand. There's contingencies built in. There's some market escalation built in. But as we break this down, thirteen point two million dollars is assumed to be borrowed by the city, twelve million eight hundred and seventy thousand assumed to be contributed from the county, and twenty-four point seven million assumed to be contributed from Indiana Packers. So let's jump forward quite a bit just to the summary, which is on page fourteen, and we'll walk through this. We've broken this down into three columns with current operations, the proposed clarifier project only, and then the all-in assumption with the clarifier and the expansion project together. So let's kind of focus on current operations first. The top half of the page is your revenue requirements. Those things that you need to be able to cover with the revenues that you bring in from your normal rates and charges. So you've got your daily operation and maintenance disbursements. So we've looked at a test year or a twelve months into April thirty-first of 2022. We've adjusted for items that are considered fixed, known, and measurable. So, you know, salary adjustments, changes in benefits, just any non-recurring expenses and so forth. We've made those adjustments and provided an inflationary adjustment. So we're really kind of getting out into that 2024 year, looking a couple of years out, and that's at one million two hundred and nine thousand seven hundred dollars. There's transfers to the water utility for meter reading and so forth. That's fifteen hundred dollars a month. So that totals eighteen thousand is the next line item. You have debt service. Currently, you have 2013 bonds outstanding. The average annual debt service payment on that is a hundred and two thousand eight hundred. And then you have an allowance for replacements and improvements. That's a bucket of money that's available for really capital expenditures, just those more one-time expenditures that are outside of your normal everyday operating expenses. So in sum, your annual revenue requirements, once we have a minor deduction for interest income is one million four hundred and sixty-two thousand four hundred dollars, you're currently bringing in one million three hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. So there's a shortfall just for current operations before any of these projects of about eighty-eight thousand dollars, which equates to about a six percent rate adjustment. So if you were to do nothing with any of these projects, we would recommend that you adjust your rates by six percent, which for an average customer is about a dollar thirty per month. So next, clarifier project, that next phase. What we add in is assumed debt service of a hundred and eleven thousand two hundred dollars. Anytime you issue debt, you have to fund a debt service reserve over a five-year period, and that's fifteen thousand nine hundred dollars. So with those two additional factors built in, instead of six percent, it's a sixteen percent adjustment. So for an average customer, that's three dollars and sixteen cents currently. So, and let me kind of clarify what I mean when I say average customer. It's really what the state assumes is an average. So they phrase it in gallons, so they say four thousand gallons. So that's about five hundred and thirty-five cubic feet, which is what you guys bill in. So currently, somebody using five hundred and thirty-five cubic feet, they're paying twenty dollars and sixteen cents a month for the super portion of the bill. That's pretty low. We've talked about this in prior meetings compared to state averages. The current statewide average is forty-four thirty-six. So you're less than half the statewide average. It's even a bigger differential when you look at the population range that Delphi fits in. For that one to three thousand population range statewide, that average is forty-seven seventy-five. You know, some larger communities with greater economies of scale kind of bring that average down. And you're currently at twenty sixteen. So with that clarifier project, sixteen percent rate adjustment, that would go up to twenty-three thirty-two for that average customer. So that's kind of phase one of what we're looking at here. It becomes more, it becomes a larger issue, you know, when you add in the expansion project. So what you would add there for that, what did I say, twelve point three million dollar borrowing? Yeah, thirteen point two million dollars borrowing. You would add average annual debt service of just over a million, one million ten thousand. Of course, your reserve funding becomes a greater number of two hundred and sixteen thousand seven hundred. I mentioned that gets funded over a five-year period. Once that five years is up and that reserve is fully funded, those dollars become available for replacements and improvements. Under that scenario, the overall, the cumulative rate increase is a hundred and twenty percent. So large percentage, but we got to keep in mind that we're starting. We're starting at less than half the state average at twenty dollars and sixteen cents. So it's a little bit relative. You end up basically right at what is that statewide average. I said that's forty-four thirty-six. Here, the average customer would be at forty-four thirty-nine. So that's an increase of twenty-four dollars and twenty-three cents a month over time. So we envision that, and there's some decisions to make tonight to give us some direction as to where you'll go from here. When I talk about that one hundred and twenty percent rate increase, we're not saying you need to do that now. That's something that can be phased in over time. You know, some of the bidding and construction schedule will dictate that and you may just want to consider your first phase for now as far as an ordinance change goes. But ultimately, we think you can phase this in over three phases with an increase in 2023, one in 2024, and one in 2025. As long as you have that final phase implemented by '25, it's really going to be about 2026 before your full debt service would kick in. So you've got time to do that. You know, so I mentioned sixteen percent for the clarifier, one twenty, kind of that all-in is the estimate right now. So knowing where you've got to go in the long run, you might choose to take a bigger bite of the apple upfront just to smooth in that increase. You know, if you do, if you just do sixteen percent now, you've got some pretty big chunks for the next two phases. So up to you, but I threw out, I wrote down a scenario of for consideration, if you did twenty-five percent for phase one, then you could do phase two and phase three at thirty-three percent. So you may ask yourself, geez, Dean, that only adds up to ninety-one. But it's the cumulative effect. The cumulative effect of those three increases is a hundred and twenty over time. So that's just a scenario that kind of made sense to me. There may be a different scenario that makes more sense to you. But again, just repeating that, twenty-five, thirty-three, and thirty-three is a scenario that would get you where we think you'll need to be. And of course, that, those second and third phases will get trued up and will have more information available to us when it's time to get those phases implemented. So I'll pause there, see if you have any questions, and then we'll, I guess what we'll want to know next is where you want to be with that phase one increase and the timing of when you want to get that implemented. You know, we're thinking that you could perhaps introduce an ordinance at your first meeting in December, and then I understand you normally have a special meeting later in December for encumbrances and so forth. You could advertise and hold your public hearing at that meeting if you wanted to get rates adopted and have them effective at the beginning of the year.
So the state average is, I think when we calculate our residential buildings and the average, there is really quite a bit less.
Yeah.
Than that state average.
That's not surprising for me to hear. So some additional perspective, you've got a minimum charge, which currently allows for two hundred cubic feet. So this is on the last page if you want to see it, page fifteen. Excuse me. That minimum charge is currently seven dollars and fifty-eight cents. Under the proposed clarifier project only, that goes to eight seventy-seven. And then ultimately, kind of all-in with the expansion project, that's sixteen sixty-nine. So you have some customers, I'm sure, that probably fall into that minimum category and that, you know, that overall impact dollar-wise is certainly feels much more palatable at the minimum charge.
I think we have to point out again that we have not increased wastewater rates since 2013. The catch-up factor that which we mentioned is particularly important here. If we hadn't been gradually increasing those over time, one, you would cover the pollution factor that we have now on the, of course, have drawn up dramatically this year in parts and equipment that we have drawn significantly, but we also would have been building up a filter along the capital side, so that, for this first phase, clarified, we would have some dollars that we could put toward it and we just do not. So can't go back and fix that, but it means that there'll be a bigger bite in the apple. Discussion, how you would like to see, if we could go with the recommendation of the twenty-five percent for spreading it over a three-year period and twenty-five percent for three to three.
My vote would be this recommendation.
I don't know if we want to go down this path or not, but you've really got some options available to you. If you just want to adopt phase one, that's fine. You can stop there. Some folks choose to go ahead and put all phases in an ordinance. And then you know that it may be subject to true-up at the end if, let's say, you know, bids could come in low and maybe you wouldn't have to implement all of the last phase. Or maybe bids come in high and you need another five percent at the end or something. Some folks like to go ahead and implement all, or include all phases in the ordinance just to go through that public hearing process once. But I certainly, I'm not pushing you down that road, just throwing it out there that it's an option if you choose to pursue it. But if you just want to do phase one for now, and we'll address phases two and three once additional information is available, we can do that too.
So you will be seeking coming through SRF, that will be part of the discussion. That will be part of the discussion in December with the public government side for taking us through that. So that may make sense to make sure that we're covered with the clarifier project and have it in direction that we would like to do. And then be able to do the expansion project next year. What's the ending of council, you have a preference? Do all three now or?
I think I'd rather do them each year than that would be that public input after each phase. That would be have a chance to come to you or contact us.
So you started with clarifier project at first meeting?
Justin, do you see any issues?
No, I don't. I don't see any issues. I don't see any legal issues with any approach that we've brought forward so far.
You have a better idea of what we might get funded. We could get some grant funding through SRF. If not, then it could be long. So there could be a combination there. So the number one, once we go through that process with any of my authority. So I think that might be a good reference. We can do what we need to for clarifier project. That request for proposals, build on our transfer project in favor of this week. And those are due against December 2nd. And that will give us numbers for the clarifier project. And the intent is to be able to put that in the construction season for the coming years. Just to reiterate, we've gone over this in several meetings. But the clarifier, adding a clarifier now is one of two that will have to be added for the entire extension project. It does not give us an increase in capacity, but it provides redundancy in the system. Should we have, you know, in order to not go out or other issues at the plant? And we have had issues at the plant. The equipment is 30 years old. So, you know, it's a the total expansion project is a three- to five-year window. So we really can't afford not to put in a backup during that period of time. So I think I'm hearing it's sensible that we would approach phase one for maintenance increase and at the 25% level. Is that, is there a large impact of that effect? Any further discussion?
Would you like to proceed as as we kind of laid it out where maybe you would introduce the ordinance on December 5th and then schedule the public hearings for your later December meeting?
Yes.
So we'll work with your local council and get him rates for preparation of the ordinance.
Of course.
All in favor, see the public sign no?
Aye, aye.
Mayor, if I could with you, we'll switch gears to water. So to your point, it's it's nice to not go long periods of time without rate adjustments, if you can. And, you know, some communities kind of approach it in a more business-like manner where you just try to have those smaller, more frequent rate increases to really stay on top of operations and and hopefully avoid scenarios where you have to have a large rate increase in the future. So we took really an abbreviated look at water and just put together a a simple one-page schedule for you. So if you want to flip to that, it's it's set up like you just saw on wastewater with the revenue requirement schedule and those revenue requirements on top. We we again had a test year through August 31st of this year and provided a 10% inflationary adjustment here on water because we we really wanted, it's really two years worth of basically 5% inflation. So with that, your revenue requirements would fund your your operation and maintenance disbursements of 1,088,000, your outstanding debt, which is $995,400 per year. You're currently still funding a debt service reserve associated with that debt, the 2018 and 19 bonds of 127,000 a year. And then $170,000 a year is that allowance for replacements and improvements. Once we deduct some of your miscellaneous receipts, interest income, that that transfer that comes from the sewage works that I just mentioned on the opposite side, your your total revenue requirements you need to be able to fund is is just over $2.3 million. You're currently bringing in $2,241,000. There's a shortfall of of just under $60,000 on the water side. So we would recommend a 3% rate adjustment. And, you know, that's that's really just to keep up with inflation, right? To make sure you can, you know, actually, you know what the inflation percentages have been. They've been over 8%. So 3% is just really what's necessary to to keep up. And so what does that mean for an average customer? And again, we know the average in in the city is probably less than this, but we're basing it on 535 cubic feet. It's $1.35 per month. That that bill is currently 4502 and is proposed to go to 4637. And part of the, part of this whole scenario is when you have debt outstanding, you need to maintain adequate bond coverage. And that minimum requirement is 125%. And we're designing this so that you're maintaining 130%. Just have a little bit of a cushion there above that minimum. So any questions on that?
So very fine, average bill, $45.02, right? You were saying it's going to increase in $1.35?
Correct.
I guess I I still think about the, at one point, I think you mentioned some, somebody was on some water that we're still below the average for our size.
Not so much on water side. You're you're above the statewide average on water. Sewer sewer was kind of that outlier where you were, you know, less than half the statewide average.
But of course, that's after our expansion project, if you will, on the water side.
Right.
So that brought us up to, or perhaps a little above state average. What about for communities outside?
Still a little bit above. The the average for communities of this size is 3273 on the water side.
Above that. And statewide average is?
Pretty close. It's 3195, so there's not a big, big change there. But, you know, kind of to your point, this tend, when we put together rate comparison graphs, it tends to be a game of leapfrog. Those that have updated their system and done a project recently kind of jumps to the higher end of that scale. And those communities that have fallen behind and have older systems and we know they've got improvement projects coming, they're going to catch up to you eventually. And you guys just happen to be in a spot where you've updated your system, it sounds like.
So this is really just inflationary adjustment?
It is.
Who thinks it is on her side?
Ask anybody that, sort of, especially with the sewer not having increased to 2013, what in your life is not going up?
Probably is that the fire rate is almost double what it is. I'm sorry, I think your projects is is almost done. So everything that we purchase, hundreds of meters or high transmit, is up substantially. We've certainly been able to increase this in salary, keep everybody motivated with the guidance. So I need to see us go, you know, get further behind.
It's just kind of, it goes back to the whole, like, the water, wastewater, way you get super city employees, like, you just keep up with it to begin with. It doesn't shock people when it's just a massive jump all at once, you know, 10 years from now. So I would, I I think the maintenance. So I think, in my opinion, it hits so much harder with such a large increase because people have gotten used to what the price is. They love it for that and they get used to it. So when it jumps super suddenly and very extremely, they're not accommodating that as well as, you know, every year it clears up a little bit. I definitely don't want to see a huge hike per se, you know, from years on over. Like, I don't think I'd do something now. I don't think the city's going to top of it with a small increase over the month. Compared to, you know, higher temperatures.
Could this be the same timetable for a public hearing?
I would recommend that, yeah.
Plus also, I just kind of go back to somebody that's making far more educated decisions and gets paid a big buck to do this is recommend. And I don't think there's much argument that can be made.
How much is between the two? Water and sewage, how much of the increase could that be on average?
Um, that is 635.
Less than $10 a month for the average.
Was, was there a second? Any further discussion? Yes, we'll be, I have a further subject to the public hearing. All in favor, see the public sign no?
Oh, aye.
Aye. Have you thought? That's very much appreciated your your explanation. Again, as I also, you're sort of, you say, achieved lots of power. Appreciate your time.
Thanks.
So we are going to make the order of this here, the construction, to go ahead and address the special question about duplex building for the property of 301 C Street. And that to the ordinance of 301 C Street.
It's enough, right? You know, we have a right to come. Let me just, I want to make sure that I report this. Wastewater is going to increase by 25% in the street. Water by 3%. That's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
So a number of individuals here tonight who have the right to speak or who want to speak on this matter, I want to assure you that you will have your time to speak.
I need to get back here so I can sit up.
The other would be for council to ask any questions that they have. And then we will open it up for public questions and comments. I think we are ready to proceed. Mr. Evans?
So I'm Mark Evans. This is Tricia Evans. We actually have our son here in the back. We're from Norrisport, Gas County. And we're here for the council here seeking your support or approval for a special exception that we've asked for for property that we own on North Robinson Street. The address is 208. I'm going to show you what we're proposing to build. I want to talk just a little bit about York Robinson Street. I'm sure most of you are all familiar with its location. It's a relatively short street. It's a dead end, probably 250 yards long or so in that ballpark. With five homes on it, they're pretty much equally spaced throughout. This particular parcel that we bought is one acre parcel. And what we're proposing to build on it, what we're seeking, the special exception, is we're asking people to build more than a family housing. So I'll start by, and I will circulate these through the room so everybody has a chance to see them. But these are the types of buildings. I think you've probably seen this, but I'm happy to answer any questions on it. Very upscale, very nice duplexes. Each of these, I refer to these as a building, but within each building, there would be two residences. So this will give you the square footage ranges from about 1,300 to 1,500. We're looking, we're looking at three-bed, two-bath. We're looking at the potential of a two-bed, two-bath. But so this is kind of an idea on what we're looking to build here. And then, should I, can you circulate these, please? So I want to make sure everyone gets a chance to see this.
Could you show them to the council on the table?
I'm so sorry, yes. Very modern construction, you know, high-end finishes on the exterior, the interior. They're really beautiful buildings and a place that I think most people would love to live. I will say that the the buildings themselves, once built, would probably be the most expensive residences in the area. And I would fully expect that upon building these, that it would lift the value of real estate in the whole neighborhood. Well, so with that said, I'm sure that you are all aware, we appeared, but we went through area plan and board zoning in September and and had anticipated having this discussion at the October public council meeting. But we decided to pull it because there are some concerns with the local residents. Obviously, there is a petition to sign. And, you know, obviously, a number of people are here that pose their concerns about it. I I will tell you that we took that information from that. And I came back and had conversations with my wife. We've got a look and, you know, we're validating what's what we're seeing here and what can be addressed. So what we're proposing on this would be to not build more than four buildings. And obviously, the approval of this would have to go through the area board or area plan and various city departments to ensure that all of the site development standards would be met, setbacks, all those things. And so the approval would come, I think, at that point. But we're asking for the exception to be able to build multifamily on this property. So I think with that, I'm going to hand it over to my wife. My wife is my partner in the business. I do a couple of things that I I wanted to spell, things that I've read. Except we're auto developers, we're developers. We're not good developers. It's her and I and my son, and that's it. And we're not, this is not a business that we're out developing real estate. not a business that we're out developing real estate. Um, we retired from, uh, the restaurant business. And so we're doing this. Uh, it's been planned. Our, our plan is to, uh, my wife has been doing homes now for a year and, um, we're going with 10 homes and she's got eight, uh, five that are rented and a couple that, and they're under construction. And my goal is to only build a duplexes. We're doing it here in Carroll County for a very specific purpose. Um, I won't get into the details. I've discussed it with the mayor. I'd be happy to address it if anyone had questions, but we're opportunities on investors. And Delphi is in an opportunity zone. There is no opportunity zone in Cass County at all. And, but beyond that, um, we also don't consider ourselves outsiders. We owned and operated a business here, um, McDonald's Restaurant in, in Carroll County here in Delphi for 14 years. Got to know a lot of people. Uh, we contributed over $7 million in, uh, payroll to the local community here and employed well over 1,500 people in the local community. And I paid property taxes for 14 years as well. So I really feel that, you know, we, at some level, were a part of Delphi for many, many years. So with, uh, my wife's going to address several issues, uh, that came up during, during order zoning. Uh, I will say this, order zoning chose to not go on it. They, or that it was explained to me is they didn't want to turn me down, but at the same time, they didn't want to approve it until the complaints that had been discussed, uh, can be validated. There's an honor, they have, they have a checklist. I think there's five questions that you have to, you have to be able to answer negatively. And one of them is it's going to cause a safety concern. And I think that they didn't feel comfortable, um, because, uh, my wife will discuss, the road with is one of the, the big drivers of that. Um, they want to be able to validate that before they could approve it. And so they just decided at that time to just not go on it. So I'd like to address the concerns that were raised. So, uh, that, Tricia.
So thank you for this opportunity. And I want to say God bless America. Tomorrow's election day and we, I like Delphi because people are involved and they give a damn. Although we may be on opposite sides of an issue, I applaud your being here and exercising your rights. And I love that you brought the youngest to show, hey, we have a voice in America. So Mark and I, or Mark at that zoning meeting, the last question that is asked is, does the request present a threat to public safety? And I thought, well, I didn't think so. I never felt when I went down North Robinson unsafe. Uh, I will say the first time I, I went down the street, I came to the stone area, I thought, ooh, is this somebody's house? Because the road was clearly paved and then it's a sharp turn. There's a lot of shrubbery and I thought, hey, what, you know, am I going to be in somebody's backyard? I turned the corner and there were a lot of homes. So, uh, I didn't feel like our request or our roadway was any different from a lot of the roadways in the area. So Mark said, we got to have some facts. Let's go out because the last thing that we would propose is something that we felt was unsafe to public health or the health and safety of our residents. So, uh, Mark showed you some pretty pictures, right? Everybody can give you a song and a dance. But what's your proof? How do we know that you'll actually do this? So Mark and I got in McDonald's Restaurant. We've been a part of this community and, you know, we had five. Uh, we regularly invested. We always did the right thing. We have improved a couple of homes in this county. One of the first things that, uh, it's our standard. They have stone driveways. That's not what we would want. And so we paved them. We didn't do asphalt. We did concrete. So all of our residents, and I, I think these are some of the concerns, what about turnover? We actually have a rental, uh, where the person has lived there 15 years. We do inspections three times a year every four months because our neighbors matter to us as do our residents. So everybody, uh, has to exist and stay satisfied. Uh, somebody maybe feels renters, maybe they're better than renters. I can tell you my first two places were rentals. So being a renter is not necessarily, uh, an indictment. It might be not bolder and I don't want the hassle of a house. I might be recently divorced. Uh, I might have wrecked my credit. So I don't want us to judge renters and stuff. We don't like renters. Okay? But the threat to public safety is a big deal. And so I recognize all of you because I've been watching in the neighborhood. I'm in the brown Ford truck. You remember stopping me and saying, are you lost? Are you looking for something? Because I'm counting cars. And literally, you were the only traffic of lawnmower.
On the Sunday afternoon, yes.
For four hours. Tonight, I sat, so I, I've done it early morning, one school bus. I've done four hours on a beautiful sunny Sunday afternoon. The only traffic was the people that live right beside the house. One left at 10 till, the other left at four o'clock or three o'clock, 2:50 and three o'clock. So there is literally no traffic that is going to create a problem. But it is a narrow street. You can't argue that. So is it more narrow than other streets in the community? So, the concerns are narrow street, uh, traffic density. Riley Park Road is nine and a half feet wide. Robinson is 12 feet. There's places on North Illinois that are 10 feet. Dodge Street, which probably all of you know, it goes back to the neighborhood that backs to Elizabeth, is 11 feet wide. I'm sorry, it narrows to 11 feet wide. Uh, Robinson, North Robinson, Mark said 250 feet or 250 yards. It's two tenths of a mile. Okay? 12 feet wide and there are five addresses. There's an address on Sam Bilroy that is, also has a drive on North Robinson. South Market is 12 feet wide. Wells starts at 15, narrows to 12. Clyde is 12 feet wide. If you go down Clyde, there's a large apartment building with 11 parking spaces. Plus there are two res- residents there. Uh, North Arnold has six homes that's 12 feet wide. Uh, the James Newton Apartments, Front Street, you have angle parking and then you have parallel parking. That street narrows to 13 feet. Lot of traffic. Union is one way, but boy, there's a lot of congestion. Lot of traffic on Union. South Illinois is 13 feet. Smith is 13 and a half. Hurland is 14 and a half and narrows to 13. 14-foot wide streets Brewer, East Harrison, East Franklin. Now here's another one. North Charles starts at 15 feet, narrows to 13 and a half and then to 11 and a half in front of the duplexes. So where you have more concentration of residential, it gets narrower. Uh, 15-foot roads Clay, Reinhardt and Old Camden. Now, the most interesting and most dense, uh, there is a road called Packet. 12 feet wide, less than a tenth of a mile. So this street is Washington, Union, and then you go northwest and you pass Monroe, Columbia, Polk, Harrison, Adams, Clay, Packet before you cross the Canal Bridge. Okay? Uh, less than a tenth of a mile. There's a lot of traffic generators right there. There's a city park at Washington and Packet where there's kids' rides or kids' play equipment. And then at the other end of Packet, there is the Canal Park Annex. Both of these parks generate far more traffic than, uh, six or eight duplexes. Now that's not the end of that story. Across from the Canal Park on Packet is a quadplex or a four-unit apartment building which has eight parking stalls. There's also residential, three or four homes, and there are two brand-new homes being constructed on Packet with three car garages each. That the end of the story. So one block down are a development of duplexes. I think there are 10. And then a block over are more duplexes, too many to count. I think I got to 16. And right beside that is Canal Commons Apartments. So there is, there are places in Delphi that are far more, uh, dense, a lot more traffic, but still have the 12-foot wide street. So I don't believe that you are approving, if you do, that's our request, anything that would threaten public safety. If there is a real concern, there's other things you can do. Uh, you can reduce traffic by actually making it a real den in the street because it is not. You could make it a one-way street. Then you wouldn't be able to close it at the end of Robinson. You can reduce the speed limit. And there are statistics, school speed limits are 20 miles an hour because if a pedestrian would be hit by a car going 20 miles an hour, they would have a 95% survival rate. Um, you could utilize speed bumps, which they do in one of the city parks. So there are a lot of things that you can do. Uh, I did some research out wide to the neighborhood, Street B, is an article by Stephen McCutcheon. This is a quote, "Combining the findings of street width and the vehicle speed, combining the findings of street width and the vehicle speed studies, we can deduce that narrower streets reduce accidents and lessen severe injuries. Wider streets increase accidents and encourage drivers to speed resulting in more severe injury accidents." Now, it's true that if we moved in and put some buildings on there, you can't let the dogs run wild and, God, you guys are out there playing on the street today, playing volleyball. That's a city street and that should be allowed. But it shouldn't stop me from developing. So I love that the spirit is here. Mark and I promise you, what we build will be better than 80% of what's in that community. Uh, Sam Bilroy, there were a lot of signatures. Sam Bilroy is 33 feet wide or 20 feet wide, depending on where you are. Very developed. I'm not sure why we got signatures from that group. So.
If I can also add, I didn't, neither of us mentioned this. These are not units that we're building that we're going to sell. We guarantee that we will own and operate them as rentals for a minimum of 10 years. We're required to do that by, by the IRS. And so, you've seen any part of the properties, we have very high standards. It will all be landscaped very nicely. It'll all be well cared for. Uh, we're very careful about who we rent to. A lot of checks. We have a professional property management company that we utilize and, and...